Good evening. This is Tuesday, August 30th. This is the regular meeting of the Reinbeck School District Board of Education. I may have a motion to approve the minutes of the August 16, 2016, regular meeting.
Salute.
Any change to the minutes? Okay, all those in favor?
We're abstaining.
Okay, one abstention. Okay, that motion passes. We have an opportunity for public comment. One member of the public is here.
Hi, everybody. I guess I'll begin with the board. My name's Johnny Lee Hain. I wanted to say hello as the incoming vice president of the Reinbeck Science Foundation. The board's game. Maybe the Science Foundation's lost. But we thank you for the service that you've provided for us. And I look forward to working with you folks on the grant process moving forward. I know you have some grants in front of you to approve throughout today's meeting. I don't know if I'll be able to be here for that time because I have to go and pick up duties on some of the kids. But we do have four exciting grants that are continuing to program that I just wanted to point out. Well, actually, one new one, 12 new Lego robotics kits being purchased by two of the grants submitted by David Wolfson. We've got the return of the Norwalk Aquarium Field Trip for the fifth grade submitted by Jill Simmons. We've got the Matt Askard Day Namer presentation returning. Justin Weisenfeld put in that request. And Fun with Energy presentation submitted by Bill Morrissey. So these are all great programs. We're really happy the teachers came to us and kicked off the year this way. We look forward to continuing working with you folks throughout the year on the grants and any other topics. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here. All right, so we'll move on to 2016-17 Comprehensive District Education Plan update.
As I mentioned to you in my bulletin to you, this is a draft of the plan. Mr. Krebs has been working on this this summer. I bring it to your attention tonight just to keep that process moving forward and to encourage you, if you haven't had a chance to go through it thoroughly, to please do so over the course of the next several weeks. Flag to my attention, Ortelores, who is your board representative on the CDEP committee, if you have any questions or comments, observations, whatever. We being the district's administrators are going to be meeting with Dr. Jaeger tomorrow for a good chunk of our administrative retreat up at Bard College tomorrow. And a big part of our agenda is meeting with Lloyd to talk about moving the CDEP process And we will need to, you know, fairly soon, bring this draft plan back to you, addressing any questions or comments or critiques that you might have. Ultimately, the board needs to approve the plan before we can start implementing it. So we will continue to fine tune it until you're satisfied with it and the committee is satisfied with it. Then we'll call a vote sometime, hopefully sooner than later this fall, as we did discuss this past spring. Because of the way this year's process rolled out, this is actually a one-year plan-to-plan, which we are intending to be followed by a five-year plan from 2017-18 for the following five years. So it still needs work. This is really the first opportunity for you and for me to see the document that Marvin has pieced together from the discussions we had this past year and at the very end of the year before. So I'm expecting there are going to be some modifications that will need to be made. So I'd appreciate any input you can give through me or Laura over the course of the next couple of weeks. So next time you see it, it'll be tweaked and hopefully it'll meet your expectations. We won't know if it's going to meet your expectations unless you give us some feedback on it, about any aspect of it. So please take that opportunity over the next few weeks to do that.
Deirdre?
So what's the process for the CDEP committee itself in terms of this at this point?
Well, we're going to, we're going to talk more about that tomorrow at our retreat. But I'm thinking that depending on what kind of feedback the board has or questions the board has about this draft plan, if they're relatively minor tweaks that we can make or, you know, turns of phrase and whatnot, we may just make those tweaks and bring it back to you. If there are more substantive questions or comments or changes that need to be made, then we may likely bring it back to the CDEP committee. You know, if there's something that needs to be inserted in here that didn't come up through our discussions last year, I would want to respect the committee's process and not just add new pieces to this without getting back to them and saying, hey, we got some comments or questions from the board about this item or a question about why wasn't this in there. So I want to respect their agency in the process and at least take it back to them when we meet with them at the beginning of the year and say, here.
So to clarify my question then, this is the document that the committee supports? That like if we were ready to vote on it and say, yes, that would be it? The committee has no plans to meet in just a little?
No, the committee has plans to meet all through this coming year.
Right, but I mean, this document, is this still a living document or not?
It is still a living document. The committee has not seen this document.
Oh, wow, okay.
This document, yeah, at the end of the school year, the committee charged Marvin to take their ideas and to put it into this format. So like I said, if this seems like it meets the bill at this point, then it could be approved sooner than later. If there are changes that need to be made, then I think we need to bring it back to the committee.
Changes might come from the committee.
Oh, that's entirely possible, too.
That's why we're waiting for us or they're themselves present.
Yeah, we're giving you a sneak peek into what may or may not be the final draft. They will be meeting all through the year. And my instinct is that at their first meeting early this fall, they'll lay eyes on this and have an opportunity to say, yeah, that looks great, or what happened to this idea? It never made it into the final draft. You know, this is Marvin's creation based on all of that input that he's been collecting from the meetings we've been having this year. So it's not there yet. I wouldn't be putting this on your plate to approve it tonight. But I want you to get a kind of a sneak peek to make sure we, when everybody's ready to go, then we're ready to go. And we're not then doing this in late September or early October. I'd like to get it where it needs to be before I bring it to you for your approval.
Laura?
And I would just like to urge the board to give us that feedback if you've got it before we start going, you know, further down the CDEP process. Let's not wait for the committee necessarily. If you've got things that are popping up and looking like they're missing or there's too much of something else, then please let us know. We can bring that to our first meeting rather than reading because we're not going to meet monthly at CDEP.
Right. And I would encourage you to do it via email. And if you send it either to Laura or to me or to both of us, then we'll make sure it gets into the process.
Deirdre?
I just wanted to clarify, just a clarification on that conversation. For the goals related to academics and achievements, which is the name, so that goal is linked directly to state test exams, 23 to eight? Is that my, am I reading that right?
I believe you are.
The goal is about proficiency in grades three to eight on state tests.
Yes, and that would be one of the measures that the committee's talked about. But I think we jumped directly on the last year, we talked very specifically about not making it just about test scores because we wanted to have a much broader understanding of achievement in our school. It's not a number on a test. It's the abilities of our kids and their work through.
In fact, there was quite a robust discussion at one of the meetings towards the end of last year's process about what that data actually even means with opt-outs and, and that question's been raised statewide, too, you know, is if this data is showing growth versus percentages of kids who didn't take the test, and granted, our school district's opt-out rate was, based on an article you might have read in the Poughkeepsie Journal a couple, three weeks ago, we had a relatively low percentage of opt-outs, but still, there were enough that our administrators and some of our teachers, anyway, are even questioning what's the, what is the validity of that data. So I think if only because of that, we're looking at other measures of academic achievement that we can use as indicators.
Well, and this list that you have in the packet of data analysis, this is an artifact from the original CDEP, which you may recall.
Yeah, right, that's right, right.
So a lot of this is formatted from the last version. So there are lots of, like, these kinds of lists are remnants of the old plan because we had to print what those new sources of data.
To replace or to supplement that stuff.
Okay, I'm glad I asked that question.
And that's part of the work that we'll be doing during the course of the year as we gear up to actually start collecting data in future years. So that's part of the ongoing discussion we're having.
Okay, thanks.
All right, any other questions? All right.
So please give us your input. That's very important for us at this juncture.
All right, the next item on our agenda is 2016-17 Board Goal Development Update.
You may remember from Wade, that we had a meeting about that. No, actually, you know, I think we, I don't want to speak for anybody here, but I think we walked away from yesterday's meeting feeling pretty good about the discussion that we had. Deirdre Dalbert has, in the wee hours of last night, took a shot at crafting statements for those goals. And Deirdre Burns has taken a shot at massaging some of that. I will have to be honest with you and tell you that I have barely laid eyes on either document just because of my schedule today, but I will. And from some of the enthusiasm that I've already gleaned from Deirdre and Deirdre, I'm pretty confident that it's not going to take months to distill those ideas down to a set of goals that we should be able to approve. And I would be optimistic enough to say that I'd expect we'll be looking at a set of goals as an action item at our September 13 meeting. And I think we're probably close enough right now. Again, I'll reserve judgment because I honestly haven't even read either document, but I have every confidence that we'll be looking at it, accepting those as board goals likely at our next meeting. So stay tuned.
Laura?
And will you guys be sharing those revisions out to us?
Yeah, I guess what we could do is just wait for your feedback, especially since, you know, this issue of you doing communication or characterizing the actual work being done. And then, you know, maybe by the end of the week.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
Okay. And I mean, I think the question remains, are we doing all five or not? A big question.
That is the $64,000 question.
But as we talk about, you know, when they're written and looked at in concrete form, it helps inform that decision.
Deirdre?
I think one question I have is if we can all arrive at sort of a sense that we're happy with the goals and we all ratify them September 13. One question I have is, it'd be nice to be able to speak about our goals at the open houses. Is that kosher for us to get people feel more or less like we're?
Are there some before the K-2, I don't know, schedules going to the schedule here?
Yeah, there are.
It is? Aren't there?
I have the calendar.
September 13, isn't it? It's September 14. Looks like September 14.
Oh, good, okay, already good.
September 14 is the K-2.
Okay, good, good, good. Then we'll be fine. It'll be a good shape.
Let me just double check.
Okay. Then the goals will be fresh in our minds as we go.
Yeah, I would, you know, I'd be cautious about speaking to those goals at open houses before they're adopted by the board, even though, you know, there's no harm to the ideas. So just to that, and as long as we're on that topic, we have in past years asked board members to speak at those four programs. So you're right, the K-2 open house is on Wednesday, the 14th, at 7:00 p.m. The middle school open house is Thursday, the 15th, at 6:30 p.m. The 3-5 open house is on Thursday, the 22nd, at 7:00 p.m. And the high school open house is at 6:30 p.m. on the 29th. So all four of those are after our next board meeting. So if we have adopted goals, that would be a great thing to share with parents. And if you would give those dates some thought and let me know which ones of you would be willing to speak at one of those open houses, then I can let the building principals know who's going to be showing up on their doorstep that evening to address the parents at those four opportunities. So also, while I'm on that topic, somewhat related, but I know if I don't mention it, I'll probably forget, we are meeting with the staff as they return to school on Tuesday, September 6th, the day after Labor Day. As always, you are all invited to attend. If you were there, we will introduce you to the staff. I assume Mark will be speaking again to the staff as well as the other matters of business that we typically conduct. We'll have coffee and starting at 8:00 a.m., and then we'll start, we'll start at 8:30. And my guess is you probably won't be there more than much after nine or thereabouts. It moves along pretty quickly because they all want to get to other matters of business. So if you can join us, it'd be great. If you can't, we certainly understand that.
Okay. All right, Board Committee reports. So there are two at your places. We'll start with Communications.
Okay, I did those. It was a brief meeting. But we wanted to sort of get a handle on the big communications topics for the district immediately. One of those being the communications requirements around potential facilities referendum, the other being the roundtable to address the district's future. And finally, the schools start trying communications and trying to figure out how we're going to communicate with parents and teachers, how to handle those issues. In terms of the facilities referendum, we were waiting a bit on the facilities committee, who's meeting later today, this afternoon. But we talked generally about convening the community group and what that would look like and how we would get the word out that we are hoping to get input around a community-involved group that will support, hopefully, the referendum if we go forward with it. The roundtable, originally, we had talked about doing that through First Thing this year, but because of the potential for the referendum, we suggested that we'll push that off until the 12th of October. And right now, we're looking at the date of October 15th, Saturday, to invite not only our support groups, but also the required community to talk to us about visioning for the future of the school. And then along the lines of school start time, we reviewed the to-do list that we had generated earlier this summer, and we're on track for most of those, all of those things. Steve Jensen's going to put a crawler on the main page of the website to say, don't forget, 8 o'clock for middle school, high school. We're hoping to come and set up a robocall for the day before school's starting to remind everybody that their schedule should be changing. We talked about possibly the collaboration between School Start Time Committee and Communications in order to surface ideas for furthering the newsletter idea on a regular basis. Bubble those ideas up. We are working on our final meeting schedule and our agenda for the year, but immediately it'll be around these three topics and then we'll sort this out on our ideas.
All right, questions for Communications? Deirdre?
It's not a question, but it struck me as I was listening to you remind us of all the opportunities for community input and communication, that we didn't talk about having coffee with the board, but it seems like it might be overkill given that we're having lots of conversation around these targeted issues. I don't know what people think on the board.
It's a good point, but if there is going to be a referendum, then that would be the topic.
So maybe we do need to do it.
Yeah.
Okay. So we forgot about that.
And we may not be free, but certainly maybe one closer November or into December, I think it's great.
Oh, smart, yeah.
Anything else for Communications? Okay, Facilities?
Okay. So we had that meeting this afternoon. It was a busy committee meeting.
And getting the minutes, these people are amazing.
Yes, quite extraordinary.
Yeah, so good.
So we discussed the capital project, which is really going to take up the facilities committee's time for the rest of this year and the next couple of years, assuming that we have a referendum and the referendum passes. But since we are not yet at the point where a decision has been made, we are still in the process of pulling together the things that we will need to have to make a recommendation to the board. And the big agenda item, or one of the big agenda items, was planning for the community committee meetings that we've been talking about to present in an informal way the information about what we're expecting to have such a referendum look like and contain to members of the Reinbeck School District community to solicit input. And so we tentatively selected three dates for that, September 12, 20, and 26. We have a tentative list of invitees to participate in the committee, which was generated from suggestions made by board members. And that doesn't mean that those will be the only people who will be permitted to participate, but, you know, if there are more people that board members think would be appropriate participants, it would certainly be good for that information to be passed on to Joe or to any of the committee members as soon as possible. But also, we're going to be looking to the Communications Committee and the administrators to publicize these meetings and this process to the community so that we can bring in even more people who may have an interest. The expectation is that we will have representatives of Tetra Tech participating in this. Tetra Tech's our architect on the project. Garrett Hamlin, who's the lead architect, is going to participate in at least two of these meetings. And Kristin Bufard, who is another architect on the team that's working on this project, will participate in at least one of them. The administrators will participate as well and board members, excuse me, committee members to the extent that they are available and desirous to participate. And at the end of the process, what the committee hopes we're going to have is a sense from the community members of what the community will accept, tolerate, appreciate, look towards having in a potential capital project. And then the committee will work with administration and with Tetra Tech and possibly even a construction manager by that point to develop a recommendation for the board to consider. We anticipate, if we keep to the schedule that we've been working towards, which presupposes a vote, a referendum vote on December 6th, that we would be presenting to the board probably at a special meeting in the first week of October. It's just that the timing is so cramped for this to happen. In order to get everything to be in place for a December 6th vote, we would need to have the board vote on and approve the referendum by October 11th. So there's just not enough time between the end of the community review process and the next regular board meeting, which is October, excuse me, which is September 27th, for us to put together the kind of presentation that we would want to be able to make to the board. So we think that that would need to be at a special meeting the week, on the week in between those two board meetings. And then the board would take it up to the first regular meeting in October. But this is the time to raise the possibility, and there's no need for a decision tonight, but just to put in your heads, that the December 6th vote is not carved in granite. It's something that we've been working towards because we were trying to keep this distinct from budget, you know, budget process and people starting to focus on budget development and also because of weather considerations, because that has been an issue with votes in the past. However, the committee believes that we should not sacrifice the integrity or the fullness of the process of considering this or preparing for it to an artificial deadline just for the sake of it. So we want to put before the board for consideration and potentially for decision tonight, if the board is so inclined, the possibility of moving off of a December 6th vote and focusing on holding the referendum vote in January instead. And although December 6th is a Tuesday and we traditionally have votes on Tuesdays, there's nothing magical about having a vote on a Tuesday either. So we could do it on a Wednesday or a Thursday. Probably don't want to do it on a Monday or a Friday just because you want to get as many people in the community to be available to come out and vote as possible. If we were to move off of the December 6th date to a date in January, that would obviously lengthen the timeline by a few weeks, and it would give the administrators and Tetra Tech more time to make the presentations. What we at least talked about the possibility of doing is rather than stack the meetings in three weeks of September, the way we have talked about, that we would loosen that schedule a little bit. We might even be able to get more community participation by doing that because, again, we're talking of a very compressed deadline for community members to participate as well. we're talking very compressed deadline for community members to participate as well. We would then basically be moving everything else up by a month. So instead of the board taking action in, at the first meeting in October, we'd be taking action at the first meeting in November and so forth and so on. If we're going to do that, if we're going to change that target date, we probably should make the decision to do it, if not tonight, then at least sometime this week. Because if we're going to stick with the original date, then Joe and Tom, in collaboration with Sheldon and Tetra-Tech, are going to have to really gear up for getting that committee formed and getting people aware of what's going on so that we can prepare for that meeting. Or the first of those meetings, I should say.
Lisa, if I could just mention, one of the things that came out of our meeting with our architects this afternoon, the question was asked, if we were to vote in early January as opposed to early December, how would that impact the construction schedule, the plan development schedule? And Garrett Hamlin felt that that difference in a month, especially at that time of year, would not push out the entire rest of the schedule such that we would lose a construction season and push the, you know, would push the, it would not push the project out to not begin construction until another year beyond that. So that, that was, in my way of thinking, that was kind of the, that was the showstopper there. If he had said, "No, if you wait another month after December 6th to vote, you're going to lose a whole other construction season and prices will be more expensive, blah, blah, blah," and he said, "No," he thought that wouldn't, would not be an issue in his, in his considered opinion.
Thank you, Joe. And that was important to the committee as well. And then just to pick up again with the report, so I won't go in detail through everything that we talked about. I think I laid it out fairly, fairly well. But what I think you'll gather from looking at this is that we are in the process, we as a committee are in the process of considering specific items that have been identified as areas that we should consider having be part of the capital project. And some of them are things that we probably won't be recommending. Or, you know, we will say, "This is something that we considered, but we don't necessarily think we ought to be doing in the context of this project." But of course, the decision's going to be the board's. And so ultimately, we will plan to put before you the things that we considered and the reasons why we made the decisions that we made. One more thing, just to let you know about, and this is very brief because I don't know much to say about it, is that we got four proposals from potential construction managers. Tom and the administrators are in the process of reviewing them. Tom's plan is to put together a list of the top applicants and then to call them in for back-to-back interviews and then make a recommendation as to which one should be hired. And that's going to happen this month.
Yeah.
I mean, this month, meaning September.
Yeah, yeah. No, I'm planning by, hopefully by the end of next week to at least have them scheduled to come in and make those decisions.
Right. So we are moving along and we're moving along quickly, and I think that it is doable to have the vote in December, but I'm not sure that it's optimal. Again, the integrity of the process, I think, is important.
Steve, I saw your hand up first.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, is there any delaying the timeframe have any impact on the state's response to what we need from them to get approval to?
Not necessarily. I mean, we did talk a little bit about that and the type of project that we're doing is going to require, or it's going to result in, let's say, whether it requires it or not is a separate question, but it's going to result in a fairly lengthy review process in Albany, which we have no control over. They're going to do what they do. Putting it off for a month isn't going to really affect that. If it was a very simple project that, you know, where they could pick out a piece and say, "Okay, you can go ahead and do this piece. It's very straightforward." It's theoretically possible we could do it in the summer of 2017. But nothing in the project is probably going to look like that anyway. So whether we approve and the community approves in December or January, we're probably still not going to be doing work until the summer of 2018. I mean, we'll be doing a lot of planning and preparation work, but we won't be doing actual construction work until 2018, which is what we always assumed is going to be the case.
Laura?
My inclination would be to defer to Tetra-Tech and you guys regarding the timing on this. I certainly don't know what all is involved and how much work they need to do to get the December 6 vote looking the way we ultimately want it to look. If that seems like it's too much and there aren't too many drawbacks about moving to January, I agree that we should put out the best proposal we can. But you guys have to make that recommendation.
Well, I'm sorry. I was just going to share that my inclination is to say that if providing us with an additional month, I mean, we're geared up to start the community outreach process as early as, you know, the end of this week or the very beginning of the coming week.
And that won't necessarily change whether we defer it or not.
Yeah, I mean, we can still, we can still gear that up sooner, but we're looking, I think, the most critical part of it that I think would benefit from some additional time is not rushing the community involvement part of it. I mean, in the morning at Communications, you know, we talked about three meetings in three weeks. It's brisk. And, you know, I don't, not that I think it would necessarily result in an inferior proposal, but I think the possibility of having a more thoughtful process with a few more weeks, especially when there's no, when there appears to be no downside in terms of the schedule of the entire project over a number of years, which it's going to be, whether we go to vote in December or early January, I'm inclined to think at this point, what's the rush? I think the biggest potential concern might be weather. You could have bad weather at the beginning of December as well as you could the beginning of January. There's no guarantees, obviously.
And as Joe shared with us at the meeting today, the referendum for the previous project, the big project, was in early February and there was a snowstorm that day, but people still came out and voted.
Yeah, it started later in the day, but, and that was a full month past what we might be talking about pushing this out to. And if we had a winter like we had this year, right, and have the snow blow my driveway once all winter, I would lose any sleep about it, but who knows? So I don't, been doing this long enough not to count on the weather one way or the other.
Diane?
A couple of things. These meetings, the public will also, besides people being invited, they're just open.
Yes.
So I'm just wondering if maybe morning should be in the mornings? I just, we're talking to the board and we did have to attend in the morning just because people's.
Well, our thinking, if you could, our thinking with this process as we put it together for the last Capital Project referendum was to attempt to engage the same people over multiple meetings. So if you do some in the morning, some in the, it's not like coffee with the board where it's kind of like a one-shot, here's what we're thinking about doing. We're trying to engage people over the course of several weeks or a month. Now, there's no guarantee the same people will come to all the meetings, but that's our, that's what we're after, is kind of a consistent group that will start and will finish and will give us the kind of in-depth feedback that we really think we want.
And as far as the timeline, I mean, I heard the committee, the only thing that I remember from being on the committee, we could talk about January now, being a great time to have a vote. After holiday blues type thing. So I don't know if like pushing into February, when it last time, you know, that throws things off, might be better than January.
The problem is that there's no right answer to that question. You know, because February has issues and January has issues and December has issues.
Yeah, we know there's an issue for all of those months. It's back to January.
That's a coin toss. Other questions? Deirdre?
It seems like some of, I mean, the key moment seems to be like the community engagement and then like any adjustments that have to be made to the project, of which, you know, clearly you're already engaging with. So, I mean, I support continuing on a robust timeline to get the community committee together as soon as possible and set up those meetings. I don't know how flexible we can be when a decision has to be made. I mean, after two of those meetings, is it clear that, you know, I haven't been on the committee, I know in every project, clearly from your own discussions, there are certain things to really look at carefully, but could that decision be made based on like, is there large agreement about issues or non-agreement?
I think there's no real way to know until we're in the process.
So when we have to, like, I guess I'm just wondering, we have to just decide, can we wait to decide about whether we do December by the end of September, like, or not? Or is that?
No, I guess, I guess we could. I mean, we can start the process like we were originally thinking about starting and then, and maybe we get to the point where we're saying after three meetings, you know what, we need two, or they're telling us they need several more weeks to study this. Well, at that point, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a heartbreaker for me to say, "Well, okay, we know we've got a little extra time if it's needed," or if the board says, you know, "We need more input on this before we could vote on something on October 11th." You know, the other thing, just so you know, the other thing we're now coordinating is now we're coordinating schedules with other people as well, with our, with our architects and, you know, Sheldon's schedule and, you know, all of a sudden, that brisk timeline is, is getting brisker just because the people are, you know, some of these people, I'm not, I'm not available on that day. You know, we set out three dates at our communications meeting this morning and one or two of those have already blown out of the water because the professionals that we need on board, they're not available. So now we've got to, we've got to flex that. So if we had the, at least the thought that we could push it out another month if we needed to, that would be helpful. I mean, that takes a little bit of the pressure off and gives us the extra time if people feel they need the extra time. If they don't, then they don't. You know, we have one meeting and everybody says, "Hey, great, let's do it. That's the project." Then it's not an issue. I doubt that'll happen, but it's possible.
And if I can just respond to that, I think that one thing that, one reason why we should be considering moving the deadline is not so much, Joe's right that, you know, coordinating people's schedules is complicated and, you know, Tetra-Tech people are not, this is not their only, the only thing that they're doing, so they have other commitments. But for me, the more important issue is getting members of the community to really participate in this process and not simply to show up to one meeting and then say, "I can't come to a meeting once a week for three weeks, you know, what do you think? I don't have anything else to do. You know, I can come back in two weeks maybe or, you know, next month." But if one person says that, it's not a problem. If five people say it, then it becomes more of a problem. This process, to my mind, is not just to, you know, be able to say that we reached out to the community, it's to really hear from them. And so the more, the more we can do to make it possible for us to really get that input, the better project we'll get and the more likely it is that we pass it.
Deirdre?
Well, yeah, I agree with you very much that we want to actually find out what the people who show up find most convenient and if it's the case that having this kind of compressed timeline is really unworkable. I think we would know that probably even in the first meeting.
That's probably true.
People would communicate that to us. It may just be the case that they'll say, "Well, if I'm going to participate in this process just over the next few weeks, that's more feasible than committing for the next three months." So we don't, we just don't know what they're going to say. So I like the idea of retaining this flexibility in terms of, you know, we're working toward this possible date, but we know that nothing will be harmed if we want to take the extra time and go into January with the vote.
Okay.
Deirdre?
So the minutes say that the Communications Committee will work on public statements to solicit community involvement.
Well, that, I mean, what was presented to us in our meeting, I wasn't at the Communications Committee meeting, so obviously I'm hearing a report, but we were told that the Communications Committee thinks that we need to prioritize community outreach on this project, that some potential members of such a group have been identified and the Communications Committee wants to know what the content of the meetings will be and that committee is considering a press release for different outlets. So that's how I translate that.
So who's going to do it as well? We don't have, we don't even have another meeting scheduled.
Right. So I'm going to draft something up. However, so as not to let you guys off the hook, I'll draft something up and send it out to you guys and say, "React." I don't think we have to meet for that purpose.
I wasn't trying to give the communications.
I just highlighted, I was like, "We're not meeting for another few weeks, so that's a problem."
I'll own that one.
Good to clarify.
Along with six or seven or eight board goals, I think. I got this one.
No problem.
No more than.
All right. Anything else for facilities? Okay. Next item is designation of delegate and alternate to the 2016 NISBA Conference Convention. Okay, so I'll just mention that I'd be willing to be the delegate as I was last year if, you know, the board chooses me as the delegate.
Oh, yes.
Would be nice to have an alternate just in case.
You should have an alternate, in all fairness.
Well, we have to talk about that.
Don't pick me right.
Who's going at this point?
Me?
Lisa.
Laura.
Okay.
I'm down for going, but.
You're not sure you're going?
Well, I might, something, the Mahal thing is the date of, so I'm not sure.
Well, I will, I will be alternate if people want me to be. I don't want to step on anybody else's toes, but if nobody else wants to do it, I'll do it.
That'd be great. Fabulous.
Sounds like there's consensus.
Yeah, no argument, yeah.
All right, so we can move on.
So Mary Ann, you have the information you need to respond to this for them. Okay. We'll actually formalize that in a vote later on in our, on our agenda.
All right, so move on to good news.
Good news!
Any good news at all?
Let me count the ways.
I guess, I thought it was great to see the kids out, like, doing their practicing for fall sports already. It's always a great feeling to have the kids on the campus and being active and ready for the seasons.
Getting up at 7:00 in the morning.
Getting ready to get up. Well, I think it's good news that we had such a productive workshop, all of us together trying to home in on our goals and, you know, my understanding is that that isn't always the case over the many ages of board retreats that have taken place in the past. So it was productive and we should be pleased, I guess.
I agree.
I would, much as I hate the term piggyback, I like the piggyback on Deirdre's comment in that, that our food service director, Larry, is in the process of planning an after-school cafeteria offerings for athletes and other students who stay around. It's not just for athletes. Kids are here for clubs or extra help or whatever. Again, it'll be a limited menu. It's not going to be a full-blown hot lunch menu, but there will be snack-ish types of things and more substantial things. Kids who are going away on a sports trip on a bus can buy a sandwich and a drink and get on the bus and take it with them. So, you know, we'll try it. There'll be some growing pains, I'm sure, but Larry seems to be pretty, pretty into the idea and I think he sees it as a, as a service to our kids and also a way that could enhance the viability of cafeteria programs.
That is great.
Yeah, that is good news.
Actually, if I can just make reference to the Facilities Committee report again, I didn't specifically mention this in my report, my oral report, but I think I did mention that we're, that Larry Anthony needs to be brought into the discussion to the extent that we're considering the possibility of doing some portion of the project around one or more of the kitchens. And he's been such a And he's been such a great partner to the district in the short time he's been with us, that I anticipate that he will be very valuable.
He's already given, I've already contacted him, we've already discussed things, we'll be meeting later this week.
Great, wonderful.
He has some great ideas.
Oh, wow.
He loves the support that we do give him.
That's great.
He's already given ideas, replace all the serving lines. So it becomes very presentable for the kids and for servants.
That's great.
Yeah, and expand the high school one, like I talked about earlier. So we'll be meeting on those things to get very specific as to what he would be looking for in his...
That's great. Thank you, thank you for that.
Okay, any other good news? Okay, move on to old business. Laura?
I'm gonna...
I'm thinking the same thing.
I have my other thing. I was just wondering if there is an update on the prospect.
Only that the Pine Plains Board met to discuss it the night after we did, and I got a text message from, from Dr. Handler that evening, just like I texted him after our discussion, and he said his board is unanimously for it. So we're going ahead with the idea, but there is, as I think we mentioned a couple of weeks ago, there is a process for our requesting to have, merger's not a done deal just because we want it, there's a process. So Steve and Rich Silverstein, the A.D. from Pine Plains, are in the process of putting the paperwork together. The other, the other little twist to that, as Steve mentioned at our last meeting, is that we would be looking at or anticipating playing at the JV level for the first year or two of the merger, just because of the numbers and where, and where they're, they are, and that would be yet another thing we would have to seek permission from the section to allow the handful of seniors who would be eligible to play this year to play at the JV level. We're thinking that it probably won't be a big deal, but again, it's not over till, till it's over. So there, there are a number of administrative hurdles that we have to get passed, but we're in the process of putting those applications in, so we'll keep our fingers crossed and hope that that works. But both boards are totally on board with the idea.
Deirdre?
Yeah, just wanted to check in about the bus company and their preparation for next week.
All the runs have been completed, they've been run, everything appears that it's going to work. We just don't know once we get all the kids in there, but as far as running the buses and the timelines, everybody thinks it's gonna work.
So you know, you know this year that that happened? You confirmed that?
Yeah, no, I have, I have, I have.
It's been confirmation.
I can't say I've seen every single one of them, but I do know.
I've seen a number of them in my travels around the district, so...
I've heard back that, you know, that they, that they have been completed, and we're doing a little switching up some of the bus drivers, so you're gonna have to go out and rerun them. They've been run by the original guy, but we're now having to, oh, wait a second, you're gonna do this run, so they have to do that. So, so far it looks good. I'm still a little concerned about the buses that go far out and coming back, but we do have a backup plan if we have to. So we have another plan in place. Don't want to use it if possible because we have a spare bus or two for CLS, would rather have the normal bus driver run it, just because they know the route, as opposed to having, like, Bus One go out there, but then Bus One is really gonna be Bus Ten for the elementary, doesn't pick them up in the morning, but is gonna be dropping them off the afternoon. So, you know, we do have it where it could work that way. I'd prefer it to be the original driver, but we do have a plan in case for some reason we find that the buses can't get back in time. There's only two I'm worried about, and we two have two backups in case. I just want it to be the original driver, we're trying to keep it that. And like I say, one day could be different than the next, and that's the part that's got us all, like, you know, first day it works, second day, well, there's more kids riding home, and now we find, oh, there is a little bit of an issue. So I'm hoping, you know, we're gonna have to take every day as it comes until we know it, it really does work, but I'm feeling a lot more confident than I was a couple of months ago. So I feel a lot, and everybody feels good about it, from Summa Cormick to Total Transportation, their head bus driver and, and their, their terminal manager, we all feel really good about how they're running right now. We've made a lot of efficiencies, too. Took a lot of the feedback from the parents last year and also the bus drivers, and actually evened out the loads. They may not have the same amount of kids, but between the distance drivings and everything, because some people have some really short routes, have a lot of kids, but short routes. Well, no, we're kind of changing a little bit, you're gonna have fewer kids, but you're gonna drive longer, and trying to split that up, and we did that in a lot of cases, because there were one or two bus drivers that were more than a little bit stressed just because they had a lot of kids at some point where another bus didn't have all that many kids. It, it really was an out-of-all thing, so we tried to switch that up, but we're looking good, but, you know, it's gonna be next Wednesday when I'm not gonna get any sleep the night before, and...
Neither will a lot of kids.
They're gonna get a half hour more sleep than they would have gotten.
I think they, I did not open my packet for this one, but...
I did.
They couldn't wait, they printed the schedules off. Did the schedules, the new times go out yet to parents?
They were supposed to go out through the building principals.
They made sense or anything, they did calls that they didn't send?
They went out through your packet.
No, no.
The district's packet.
The, the new, the new times?
No, the bus route's...
This bus schedule is separate.
Yeah, I got that.
The bus schedule.
It's a separate bus schedule.
It should've came from the building.
You got that in a mailing from the high school.
The high school, principal, middle school. We printed it out by building and then gave it to the buildings to put into their individual packets that were being mailed home last week.
And there's been no calls?
Just, I have one, but it has nothing to do with the times or anything.
Yeah, it's been very quiet in terms of feedback, like, you know, last year, you'll recall, we were hearing after, after the, the start of school, you know, my kid's bus route made no sense, and how come my kids, so we got none of that this year.
I guess, I think I should open yours.
No, it's open the packet, yeah.
They, they should open, they, they should open theirs, and there is a ton of information in those packets and on our website, and in spite of that, I see things on social media about what time does school start this year?
Oh, my God.
So, short of going door-to-door, which we are not going to do, it's, it's out there for people who want to click a mouse.
Deirdre?
One of the issues last year was that when there were problems, we were calling the district and no one was in yet to answer. Now, I know, now that we're starting later, I don't know, the relationship between when the first bus goes out and when people are in the district office, but I wonder if it's at all possible for Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, to have someone be available to answer the phone those days at the time that the first pickup's supposed to happen, we know someone's in the office, should there be an issue?
That's a good idea.
Good idea, and I will inquire about that with the person, I know I will be here. I think the question comes, and the letter does state, if it's before eight o'clock, they're to call this number, which is Total Transportation. After eight o'clock, it's then to the business office. But I, I think you make a great suggestion, and was something I had in my, in my mind, is that try to have Summa Cormick in there at seven o'clock for those, that first week, just to make sure there are no answers, and if... The other thing that I could see happening is Total gets overwhelmed and just can't answer all the phones. You know, they only have so many lines and they only have so many people working.
Hope that's not...
Well, no, but I'm just saying, because you also, they're, they're also picking up for SPAC and KILL, they're also picking up for BOSI, so, I mean, we're not their only customer, so, you know, could expect some issues from those.
And I know it may stress your staff, I can't say that I know how any of this works, but on the other end, people would be dropped off at different times, particularly the little kids, so if they're, you know, I don't know how that, who they call, like, you know, people might go like, oh, the bus isn't, you know, my kid's in the bus yet, or... It was just an issue last year with communication with the district office, I'm just wondering if we might be well-served to ensure that we have someone there for the first week to be answering any calls.
I think what we need is like an Uber app where you can see where your bus is on your phone.
That's possible.
Well, Johnny just left, that's something that the Science Foundation...
The district will have that.
So you'll be able to tell where the bus is.
Correct. You know, that, that hasn't been put in place yet, but we, that should be happening very early.
All the buses will have GPS, there'll be GPS.
Enabled.
Enabled, thank you, as well as bus cameras on all the buses, so I think, equipment-wise, we'll be in much better shape than we were at the start of last year. I mean, we already are.
Oh, yeah, there's no doubt about that.
Laura?
And can you tell us how long the longest run is? How long has it been?
I can't remember off the top of my head, because one of the things that we put into the program this year was also the time coming all the way back to the school. So that, you know, as far as that's concerned, it's kind of hard to say, we do, from the high school coming in in the morning, I don't think any of them are more than 50 minutes, and in fact, are probably less than that. I think maybe the furthest is gonna be Route One out there, just because they got a far way to go. Sorry about that, but that's the way it goes.
But they're not picking all those kids up on the way back in?
No, no. So, but then when we begin the CLS one, it actually starts counting from the moment they leave here to that first pickup spot. Some of them, that first pickup is only five minutes away, another one's gonna be 15 minutes away, so that's in the total, so, but we'll have to take, I'll, I'll see what I can do about providing that, because we'll have to take that out of there.
Thinking especially for the little ones, parents who get crazy about how long their little ones run the bus.
They're, they're really not all that long at all, they're actually, it looked, it looks a lot better than it did the year before. We did some things, too, in certain parts of the district where we could, where they might be the first pickup in the morning, usually reverse routes and go the other way, so the first picked up, a lot of times are the last dropped off. In some cases, we don't have any choice, we have to do it that way. Just, we're not gonna go past all the kids' houses to go back to the first one, but we are able to, in one or two cases, be able to go back to the first pickup in the morning and make them the first drop-off without it creating, so that was very helpful, especially the Ryan Cliff area, we were able to do that, which was an area where I got a lot of complaints, but we got, we gotta figure it out how we, we could do that, so...
That's great.
So they're able to, first one picked up, they're gonna be one of the, I'm gonna say that the first one dropped off, but they might be the second or third one dropped off. So that, that should go a long way to settle that particular issue. And we did it also kind of in the center around Salisbury, we were able to do a little bit of that, too.
Other questions? Other old business?
So Joe, I'm sending it out, looking at the committee.
Yeah, we need to do that.
I did see, he does have it there. We discussed it this afternoon, feels always a go. But I know he does have it. Just, just the, who the members are, and then what days for the entire year in which they're currently scheduled.
All right.
You know, actually, you know, if it's the second Tuesday of the month, but, you know, there's the second Tuesday, there's a holiday, so it's on the third Tuesday, so he does have a list of all those things.
Laura, were you saying we should volunteer for open houses?
Well, if we want to fill the time. We just don't have our calendars, so...
Or we could just move on and...
All right, public comment.
Move on to public comment. Seeing that there is no public present at the moment, we'll move on to other. Are there any items of other? Okay. So we want to look at our calendars and...
I think, I mean, unless you have questions, I think we can, we can vote without...
Do I actually, I didn't hear you. He's coming back right now. Joe, you're clearly indispensable because we got stuck, we couldn't move on in the agenda without you.
That was a bomb, too. You couldn't decide it.
No, no.
No, we weren't incapable of it.
Feel free.
Under old business, they were talking about the meeting schedule for...
Committees.
Alright, so I have that under other.
Okay.
We didn't have anything there either.
Okay, so we, we could, we could hash that out now, or we could hash that out before we go into executive session, whatever, whatever you want, but as long as you mentioned it and waited for me, I will hand out what I have at this point. So you should each take one of these, and I'll take about two minutes to, to walk you through this very quickly. Okay, the, the four committees that, thank you, Steve, the four committees that have check marks next to them are committees that I believe are done. Please, people on those committees, take them home with you, check your calendars. We most recently had a discussion this morning about the communications committee, and the communications committee gave me any, any Thursday of the month starting at 8:00 a.m., so I went through my calendar to make sure I was available during those times, and I put, I put those dates down for the communications committee, so they, they should just double-check those dates to make sure they have no conflicts, and then let me, let me know. And I don't need to know that tonight, I mean, that can be via email later this week. The other, audit committee has set one meeting. To be honest with you, I'm not sure what the game plan is for that group, but since I'm not involved with that, that's always been handled.
Well, just so everyone knows, like, typically, I think, I think our charter says we're supposed to meet three times a week.
Four, four times.
Four times a year.
Four times a year.
So, and it's been a little ad hoc in that way, so presumably it may still be in that way.
Whatever, I'm just, we don't necessarily have to set a monthly meeting up for that committee. And then the, the three remaining that we need to get hashed out are policy, finance, and personnel. What's there is just what was there earlier in the summer, but there were numerous conflicts that I think we got it settled pretty easily today with the communications committee. We sat around the table, four of us, and said, everybody said, yeah, I can, I can meet any Thursday as long as it's, you know, in the morning. So that was easy. I went back, checked it against my schedule, and, you know, we had it. So we need to do something similar, I would suggest, for policy, finance, and, and personnel. And again, we can have that conversation when we're cleaning, cleaning up here and getting ready to go into executive session, so it's up to you, but that's, that's where we're at at this point. And if somebody finds a problem with any of those other committees, please let me know within the next couple of days so we can tweak it and fix it.
I'll just mention that in facilities today, I brought up a meeting on 9/27, which is not on the schedule, so we can scratch...
Yeah, I thought, I had it, but we don't, this is not happening.
Unless we decide that we need to meet that day, because we talked about the final community committee meeting is on the 26th.
Yeah, that's right.
So we would possibly meet that day to, to go over that, the results of the community meetings.
You have one facilities committee meeting on a Thursday instead of a Tuesday?
I do. Which date is that?
It says 9/8.
Right, that's the, that's the next one, because it was suggested that it was valuable for us all to get together before we start having the community meetings.
Okay.
Yes. That was a date we set very specifically.
Right, that was after you left.
Yeah, it's okay.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Joe, a couple of the policies are on Saturdays?
Yes, we want them.
Is there a problem?
Is there a problem?
I mean, I, I would, I would worry, I'll tell you, the process of trying to put this together, this, this Ju, this July was absolutely maddening, so let's, let's start by looking at the day and the time, and if the second, for example, under policy, if second Thursday of the month at 12 noon isn't good for you and you're on that committee, just let me know, that doesn't work for me. I've got a conflict with that, so then we'll look at a different... look at a different, we'll look at a different date. Steve had also mentioned to me during the, the stir and drum over putting the schedule together about an interest, since he's all, he's on Finance and Personnel, doing them on the same, scheduling them on the same day. Is that my, do I recall correctly?
That would be great, or doing one of them like at eight or nine in the morning, not both at noon, so I can get out of my back the day. So, you know, so either one of those solutions, same day or one early in the morning. I don't care which one it works for. Anything else would be helpful.
Well, it was more that it was Audit and Finance. It was like kind of repeating the same thing at these meetings.
Was numbers heavy?
No, it wasn't the numbers. It was just like the same conversation.
Oh, yeah.
All right, so if everybody could just review the, these dates and make sure that there's no error.
And then let me know by committee. And I can fix the individual committees. And then for the ones that we haven't finalized the schedule, let me know if that day and time works for you. And if not, what you'd prefer. And if we had a, a little caucus by committee here later this evening before we go into executive session, that would make it a lot easier. Because then we could all say, yeah, well, we can all do this day at this time. Okay, now, now I can start blocking into the calendar. So we don't have to do that right the second, really, what you, what you, whatever your orders are.
Laura?
Just a quick note for Personnel. The dates that you got here, the October date is the NISBA convention in November. It's not...
Yeah, yeah.
Be here for either of them.
Yeah.
It's the day before Thanksgiving.
No, I'm going to let you go Saturday.
All right. Any other items of other?
No.
I have a rock.
Okay, we'll move on to action items. So I may have a motion upon the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools to approve, actually, I should first ask if anyone wants to remove anything from the consent agenda. Okay. See no requests. We have a motion upon the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Okay. All is in favor. That's unanimous. That motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to accept grants from the Rybek Science Foundation as follows. Lego robotic kits submitted by David Wolfen in the total amount of $4,600 for 12 kits as stipulated. A fifth grade field trip to Norwalk Aquarium submitted by Jill Simmons in the amount of $3,868 as stipulated. The Madagascar Day Lemer presentation submitted by Justin Weisenthal in the amount of $425 as stipulated. And Fun with Energy presentation submitted by William Morrissey in the total amount of $700 as stipulated.
So moved. Second.
Free discussion. I'd like to thank the Science Foundation for their generous contributions to our educational program. All is in favor. That's unanimous. That motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the reappointment of part-time cafeteria personnel for the 2015-16 school year effective September 1st, 2016.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All is in favor. That's unanimous. That motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the permanent civil service appointment of Susan Fitzgerald and John Branstorm as food service helpers effective September 7th, 2016.
So moved. Second.
I need to make a correction to that motion. That should be, they, they are not permanent. They're, they should be probationary, correct?
Correct.
Okay. These are new employees who will have to serve a 26-week probationary period. My apologies.
So all is in favor of the amended motion. That's unanimous. That motion passes. We may have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve additional non-unit salaries for 2016-17.
So moved. Second.
Is there a motion to table?
This is just the salary schedule for the food service helpers.
Okay.
It's a 15-cent increase over last year.
Okay. All is in favor. That's unanimous. That motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the list of additional substitute teachers and non-instructional substitute personnel for the 2016-17 school year.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All is in favor. That's unanimous. That motion passes. I understand that we're going to be tabling motion 6.7.
Yeah, there's nobody to point this evening.
Okay. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve additional mentors for the 2016-17 school year.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All is in favor. That's unanimous. That motion passes. We have a motion to approve the Board of Education's goals for the 2016-17 school year.
If we want to table that, I would recommend.
We have a motion to table.
So moved. Second.
Okay, all is in favor of tabling the motion. That's unanimous. That motion passes. The tableled motion. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to designate a district delegate and alternate delegate to exercise their judgment as necessary to represent the Rybek Central School District Board of Education in voting on proposed bylaw amendments and resolutions at the 2016 NISBA Convention and Education Expo.
So moved. Second.
Okay, and those, delegate would be myself and the alternate is Lisa Rosenthal, as we discussed earlier. All is in favor. That's unanimous. That motion passes. We have a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussion of employment history of particular persons.
So moved. Second.
All is in favor. That's unanimous. That motion passes. We're moving into executive session.